Well, let's get this informal meeting going and Mr. Duhany, if you can get us going.
Yep, alright. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the first presentation will be a briefing on the Independence Boulevard and Wakefield Drive intersection project. As you all know, this project is a stoplight project and we've been getting some feedback from constituents and councilwoman and staff to make sure that the council was inoculated in terms of the warrants and the reasons for this project. So, the next voice here will be LJ Hanson. They kick off the presentation.
Welcome, LJ.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. It's my pleasure this afternoon to introduce Wes Parker from VHB. Wes is the project manager for the Independence-Wakefield signal improvement, or not signal improvement, intersection improvement project. This project has been around for a while. It is not normal that we would come to you to talk to you about an intersection, but it's generated a lot of attention and we thought it would be wise for us to give you an update on what's happening and where we're going from here. Wes?
Welcome.
Thank you, LJ, and good afternoon. So, the purpose of today's briefing is to provide an overview of the project and a history of the project as well as the purpose and need, provide a public meeting summary from a public meeting that was conducted in March of this year, discuss an alternatives analysis from a more in-depth traffic study that was conducted subsequently from that public meeting, and correspondence and outreach from the community, and then last but not least, any questions and answers that our council may have. Again, this is an informational briefing only. We're not asking for any action at this time from council. So, project location, if you're unfamiliar with the intersection, this is Independence Boulevard and Paul Revere and Wakefield Drive. So, there are two different side street names on either side of the intersection. It's just north of Haygood Road, but south of Pleasure House. So, a little bit of project history. So, back in 2018, the Thurgood community reached out and requested information and assistance from city and traffic engineering because of perceived concern for safety and other hazards of the way this intersection operates. So, subsequently in 2018, Public Works Traffic Engineering set out, did traffic counts, and did a traffic study, and evaluated the intersection for the warrants that may necessitate or could encourage the installation of a new traffic signal. Those warrants were met in that 2018 study. It met three warrants specifically. And then subsequently, two additional traffic studies were connected, or excuse me, conducted in 2022 and 2024 after, and I do apologize, there's a typo on this slide. We noticed right before the meeting that third 2018 date should actually read 2020 when the project was put on hold due to some discussions. But in 2022 and 2024, those traffic studies were updated again and reevaluated, and again confirmed that a signal warrant was appropriate for this intersection. So, continuing on to 2024, a design for a new traffic signal was started, and the design has progressed subsequently. The purpose and need for the project has been safety first and foremost. So, the idea was to enhance motor safety, specifically for left-turning maneuvers at an unsignalized railway, uh, unsignalized, excuse me, intersection crossing, and also with a additional enhancement of any type of pedestrian accommodations that could be done at this intersection if a signalized intersection was installed would benefit this connectivity east-west across Independence Boulevard because there is no pedestrian crossing currently that is protected at this intersection. So, you heard me before mention earlier, back in March of this year, citizens, excuse me, a public information meeting was held. It was very well attended. We had 84 attendees at the elementary school where it was conducted, where we received 45 comments in writing, 106 total public comments, 96 of which were from unique households who received as part of this. The image you see on the screen here is a quick summary visually representing where the households were that commented. The red pins, which I know it's a little bit hard to see here, but the red pins are those that were not in favor of the project, and the blue pins were those in favor of the projects. Basically, the split was 63%, excuse me, 61% were not in favor with 63% of the total comments, all being from the Lakesmith Terrace or the west side of the intersection. The east side of the intersection or the Thurgood neighborhood were very, uh, almost entirely in support of the project. So, subsequently from that public involvement period, there were a lot of conversations and good questions that were asked, and we wanted to go either even further in depth to study this intersection yet again, to make sure that we evaluated even more obscure alternatives that had not been more thoroughly looked at in the past, up to and including using some traffic data that I'll explain here in a second. But those five alternatives were conducted, and the analysis of those five alternatives really focused around the three yellow dots or the three intersections. What does it do at Haygood? What does it do at Wakefield and Paul Revere? And then what does it do at Yule? Alternative one was doing nothing physical to the corridor except doing revised signal timings that correspond on the corridor. Obviously, the signal timings were conducted at Haygood Road as well as at Yule. And so, again, the goal would be here to improve safety at the intersection with Wakefield and Paul Revere by creating gaps, by basically throttling back the flow of traffic along Independence. Alternative two, which is the current proposed alternative, as we discussed before, that started in design in 2024, was to install the traffic signal as shown in this diagram here, a traditional signalized intersection. Alternative three was to close the median entirely. So, this would prevent any lefts from the side roads occurring, as well as any lefts off of Independence into the side roads as well. So, it would be a complete closure of that median cut through. It's important to note that this alternative and the subsequent alternatives, because of the deviation or the restriction in turning movements, the anticipation was those vehicles would go elsewhere within the community to make those movements. Alternative four, which sometimes can be referred to as an R-cut, but it's restricting the side road movements where they can only go right out from the side streets. But the main line, Independence, can make a left. So, it allows the main line to be able to make a left, but again, controls the left turns out of the side roads to be prohibited. And then last, alternative five was to close access completely to Paul Revere. The idea behind this alternative came out from that, that public meeting where there's a concern from residents that cut through traffic could be a problem, and you will cover that in a moment. So, the idea of closing the access to Paul Revere completely would prevent people from cutting through that neighborhood potentially. So, with that, the results, we have a lot more results than are neatly summarized in this table, but we wanted to focus on three different main movements, and that's southbound Independence at Yule, Wakefield and Paul Revere left turns in the westbound direction, so coming from the elementary school side, and then also southbound at Haygood Road. So, all of these numbers you see here are delays in seconds. And what you can see here, and something important to understand, is that doing nothing is, is the status quo, but any of our alternatives, which will allow for the safety improvement at the intersection, do have an adverse effect on southbound Independence Boulevard. You can see here, just for example, between alternative one and two, southbound at Yule, there's an increase of approximately six seconds in delay, but there is a delay because some, the capacity has to come from somewhere to prevent those gaps. So, we will dive in further, other examples, and how we compare those alternatives for delay in a moment. The cut-through traffic problem, WSP, who is the consultant on the project here, took an innovative approach using streetlight data. So, this is data that basically comes from a variety of different private, as well as commercial sources. They mine data through Bluetooth connections and apps and other devices. And so, we were able to go in and actually do slices and determine where vehicles are going to and from. And so, essentially, the analysis went from the points one, two, and three, which you see on the screen, down to Haygood Road. And if they went through the neighborhood from those starting destinations, again, one, two, or three, then the assumption was it was a cut-through traffic. Therefore, it wasn't someone that just came out of the neighborhood going to Haygood. So, the existing cut-through traffic utilizing this approach was actually 5% of vehicles coming southbound on Independence currently cut through the Lakesmith Terrace neighborhood. Summaries of effectiveness. So, there's a lot of data, a lot of numbers, and so approaching this from trying to determine what is the most effective way of analyzing the five different alternatives against each other, particularly when some of the alternatives are very different, we wanted to analyze it against four different summaries of effectiveness essentially. So, the first effectiveness category was improving Wakefield delay, uh, excuse me, yeah, improves Wakefield delay and the queue distance. So, you can see here, there's different graphic symbols that represent a check, indicates the reduction in delay and queue distance such that it significantly is going to reduce the need for a person that's driving out of the unsignalized intersection to take a risky maneuver. So, when we're talking safety, we're trying to slow people down and say, hey, you can wait X number of seconds, which is minimal, versus 300 and some seconds, which is possible today. So, alternative two was the one that provided the best measure of effectiveness for that, with the other alternatives either restricting that left turn maneuver altogether, or also slightly improving the, um, the turning movement. Alright, summary of effective number two is impacts to southbound Independence. I mentioned previously, none of them improve or don't impact the southbound Independence Boulevard. That's short and sweet. Impacts to other neighborhood streets, this is something that we're very sensitive to and is something that, that requires a lot of engineering judgment and thought process. But inevitably, when I went through the different alternatives and you heard me describe the left turn maneuvers that are going to be restricted, inevitably, they have to go someplace because the demand generator is southbound on Independence hitting towards Haygood, particularly from the Thurgood neighborhood. So, alternative two is the only alternative that does not redistribute the traffic pattern to subsequent neighborhood streets. And last, the fourth factor is doesn't meet the purpose and need. So, does the purpose and need previously described, which alternative meets the full purpose and need? Alternatives three, four, and five don't because we are preventing the left turn maneuvers and we are potentially shifting a problem further down the road. For example, if you come out of Wakefield, have to make a right, you'll need to make a U-turn at Yule, and increasing delay there could make people make, again, more risky maneuvers. So, alternative two was the option there. And then alternative one, it does improve, and it's important to note, the delay with redistributing the volume along Independence does reduce the delay at Wakefield in an unsignalized condition, but it only reduces it marginally. It doesn't reduce it any substantial matter. So, with that, looking at all the data, alternative two is still the preferred alternative that meets these measures of effectiveness. And the next steps for the project are finalizing the design, moving towards 100% design plans for the new signal in the fall of 2025, pre-construction preparation, including confirming quotes and ordering traffic signal equipment. This project is slated to be built using the city's on-call construction contracts. So, we will just be soliciting final bids for the metal, which is a variable cost, with construction slated to begin in spring of 2026 and completion in summer of 2026. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Yeah, I know this is a bit of a hot button. Before I get to Josh, let me just say this and talk to a couple of the folks in opposition. Their concern was that, you know, just riding on Independence, you know, Haygood, back and forth, you know, there's always delays, and they, they were confirmed that the white sequencing on this would actually exacerbate, you know, what they consider improper white, ineffective white sequencing. You know, what's your thoughts to that?
Yeah, so, if we can go back to the delay slide, oh, yeah, um, yeah. Basically, in short, the delay, as, as we've been very open about, will increase slightly on Independence Boulevard, but the real kind of silver bullet, which is certainly not simple by any stretch of the imagination, is doing something at Haygood. Haygood Road is the focal point of a lot of the backup and delay along Independence Boulevard through this area because there's just too many turning maneuvers occurring at that intersection and too high of a volume. So, introducing the new signalized intersection into the middle of the corridor between Yule and Haygood, yes, while it will effectively have some level of small delay, as you can see here by these numbers, again, alternative two, the southbound through movement there, it's, it's not significantly larger because the queue is exacerbated through the whole section due to the Haygood Road intersection.
You know, let me just say that, you know, my old district at, uh, you know, Indian River and Kempsville Road, you know, we have that very interesting intersection there.
Yes.
And, oh, yeah. We heard about that a lot first, but it seems to be working now, but it just took an adaption period. I think we got six lights at that intersection.
Correct, yeah.
But everything is sequenced and underway where people can go and make a left turn at the same time. And actually, it was actually a very, very dangerous, it was considered one of the most dangerous intersections in Hampton Roads. And, you know, but once again, you know, I think public safety is the key. Josh?
Thank you, gentlemen, and then for the rest of the folks who've been working on this, I think probably for at least my two and a half years since I've been here. You know, I guess I should first say, like, I want to say first that I live in Thurgood. And I, there's a couple of different ways. There's actually four ways to go out of the neighborhood. Two of them, two of them have lights, Yule and, um, at the Commons. But there's 1,700 plus homes back there, two schools, and it's a way that I take out very frequently out of the neighborhood. So, I've been accused of being biased in this issue. And I just, I want to let you know that I guess, I want to acknowledge that, you know, importantly. But, but because I know this area really, really well, that doesn't mean I'm not really familiar with it. When my in-laws and my mother comes in town, when my kids get their driver's license, they would be forbidden to traverse this intersection. I would, can you pull up slide six? Thank you. And how this issue came to me, and I'm like, and first of all, I just want to say thank you for using your time to talk about a traffic signal, you know, because we got lots of those in, in the city. But, but this is, this is something that, that people have been asking for, for about 20 or 30 years. And, um, and there, there is some different feelings about this, in particular from Lake Smith Terrace and, and Haygood Point. And I'm, I'm, all of that is my council district. So, I've got some people who are going to be happier with me than they will be upset with me, I guess, over some of this, and I've got to reconcile that. But how this came to me was I moved into the neighborhood. It was an unsafe intersection. I knew, and I knew it. I forbade my, my in-laws from ever going there. And, and I went to a civic league meeting, and I, and I found out that there was going to be a light there. And, and I thought that was great. And then, and then a light never happened. And so, when I became a councilperson, I went to a civic league meeting, and they asked me, where's the light? And I said, well, I guess I'm a city councilperson now, so I can go find out. And, and I heard about the opposition from Lake Smith Terrace, and I heard that some of the, you know, concerns about cut-through traffic and throughput on Independence basically stalled the project. That, that decision was made, you know, not, not, I, I think it was made based on the community responses and, and less on the safety data. And so, when I look at our job around the table, even just trying to take, you know, take, take the fact that I live in the neighborhood out of it, um, you know, I don't think politicians should decide where traffic lights go and crosswalks go. I think it should be a data-driven thing. There is 10 times the amount of traffic coming out of Thurgood. On, uh, there, it's a divided road coming out on Independence. There's, like I said, two schools. I've seen buses, school buses, landscaping vehicles, fire trucks, ambulances straddling the intersection trying to play Frogger to get across it. And it's very dangerous. And I've, I've been in a couple of close calls there myself. So, when I heard about their, the, the opposition, I slowed it down and walked around and talked to people. We, we had a community information meeting. I've talked with our Public Works Director to make sure that, like, you know, the concerns about cut-through traffic, if, if, if they, if they, if they come to be that we're monitoring, monitoring that so that we have data to go back to the neighborhoods. But, I mean, at the end of the day, what this really is, is it's a traffic signal and a crosswalk on a street with a school on it. And, and, and so, and Haygood and Wishart are, uh, that's complicated, and that involves property acquisition, and that involved potentially cutting off Wishart Cove and Woodstock and forcing all the traffic onto a two-lane narrow road, Woodstock Road with no sidewalks. So, this impacts a lot of people, including folks in my district and District Eight, anybody who goes to Independence Middle School. So, I'm sorry to belabor it, but I wanted to explain it. And I wanted to let you all know that I took the time to talk to people, and there are people who are opposed to it. But I just view the safety benefits as paramount.
Okay, anybody else at this point? I'll tell you what, at least this is up, you know, for discussion, and I'm, you know, I'm sure that there'll be some more public, you know, input coming forward. But, you know, this is another one when you have, you know, when you take a look at, you know, this map up here, and you see two divided, you know, you know, communities, you know, it really makes for a tough decision. But I think ultimately, really comes down to safety, you know. And Josh, there were some significant injuries, you know, as a result of, you know, traffic mishaps.
Side collisions. So, there, when people are turning left out of that neighborhood, which 10 times more of the traffic does on the other side of the neighborhood, and they're trying to go left and south on South Independence, they've, five cars in the middle, there's people trying to go in different directions. You, you would think people would observe, like, the courtesy of the, I got here first and I go first kind of thing, but they don't. So, and then traffic coming down Independence is going 50, 55 plus. And it is, and, and there's some other unique things about this little area here where there's a service road or, you know, feeder road, and there's, there's residential on it. And, you know, those people, we need to figure out a way to make sure that they don't get trapped on their, you know, on their feeder road street, and we'll do that. But we're, I, I've, I've talked to people who, who, but for a tree would have had a car in their living room. I've talked to people who have rescued people from burning vehicles that were overturned. Nobody's died there yet, thank goodness. But this has been something that, that, you know, that, that the neighborhood has been asking for for decades that meets the public safety checklist and requirements. Are there other options? Yes. This is the better option, in my view, although I don't get to make that decision, just because if you, if you, even if you were to cul-de-sac in the other side of the street, you would still be dealing with left turns and broadside collisions and school buses and stuff like that. If you, if you block the traffic, you know, coming out of Wakefield, then what you're doing is you're forcing people to take Michigan lefts, you know, and go, and go up to, go up to a place where, you know, there isn't even enough room to turn along vehicle. So, people could go up to Yule, but you'd be driving a mile out of your way to just go back down to get to right where you just got to. So, anyway, I, I believe it enough, and, and I want to recognize, there's, there's folks here who, I don't know, maybe support or don't support. I see a couple of people who don't support it. But, and I, I want to recognize y'all from the neighborhood, and I appreciate you coming out. So, and I recognize that there's differences of opinion on it. But, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I, the, the engineers get to make this decision, the politicians don't.
So, follow on with that. Thank you, Mayor. Can I ask our chief engineer, Mr. Hanson, if he could weigh in on this, his opinion?
Well, point of clarification, Tony Utterbach is the city engineer. But, yes, sir, I, mostly, I, I recognize that there's a, there's a lot of opinions about this, about this. The Department of Public Works recommends a traffic signal at this location. We believe that it is truly the safest option at this location, and that, that's what the data has shown us. There are alternatives, but we do not believe that in the grand scheme of things, the best interest of the entirety of the city is represented by anything other than a traffic signal.
Okay. You know, let me just say that, you know, back in the day, you know, when I was a district guy, the highest traffic count in the city was right in front of Regent CBN Founders Inn. 104,000 cars a day would go between 64 and Centerville Turnpike. And there were always backups, you know, between there, pretty much all the way down to Stumpy Lake almost. And then, but eventually, you know, when they got the new intersection in and they got the light sequencing, you know, it, it used to be sometimes you'd get a, you know, get a green light, and then all of a sudden, you go a couple of blocks, and then you hit a red light, and it, it just wasn't paid enough. You know, so I think if a consideration could be to, you know, not just enter, you know, the, the street light itself, but, you know, taking a serious look at the engineering to move traffic, you know, all the way from Virginia Beach Boulevard, you know, you know, right out to Southampton, you know, I think that might be helpful in, you know, taking care of some of the problems. Just my thought, focus group of one. Okay, thank you all very much. Okay, I think we're ready. Moving on.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next presentation will be a briefing on a proposal for a convention and sports center parking. And in essence, basically, staff is interested in moving in the direction of starting a charge for parking in the sports center convention center area for the next tourism season. And we want to brief City Council on this proposal to seek some feedback before we proceed. This also is not the, clarify, this is not the oceanfront parking garage briefing that we owe you. We plan to come back next month and give you all options for considerations as it relates to creating incentives for encouraging residents to come park in the oceanfront. So, the next voice you'll hear will be Amanda Jarrett. She'll kick off the need and what we're trying to solve for with charging for parking, and also LJ Hanson will come and give an overview of the, the path forward that we've selected.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of City Council, Manager Duhany, and City Attorney Stiles. I'm pleased to be joined by Director Hanson to discuss parking adjacent to the convention center and sports center. As you all are aware, the Virginia Beach Convention Center and Sports Center support City Council's initiative to transition our community to a year-round resort. We are heavily invested in sports tourism, and when these two facilities, which share the same parking areas, have overlapping events, parking can be quite problematic. Concerns have been well documented. You all know, starting in early spring of every year, we see, as you'll see in the pictures, to follow complicated parking situation, which does not set forth the best experience for our visitors and guests and those that are patronizing the two facilities. In response to some of the parking challenges that we've experienced, an RFP was issued to construct a parking deck at the corner of 19th and Parks. Responses to that RFP were due on Monday, October 20th, and will be presented to City Council at a future meeting. So, here are some pictures that I'm sure you've all seen. Again, it's wonderful that our facilities are programmed to this extent. However, when we have individuals that are unable to leave the facility or are towed or ticketed, again, it's not setting the best impression for our visitors and guests. So, City Council has tasked us with analyzing the existing parking facilities and coming up with solutions. Again, issuing an RFP for a parking garage is a part of that solution, but working with the Department of Public Works to establish a separate zone is another key part of the solution. So, just to orient you, as Mr. Hanson begins his portion of the presentation, you see here on the map, the location of the sports center convention center, and then the shared surface parking lots that exist today.
Thank you. I'm also pleased to let City I'm also pleased to let City Council know that the department has hired a new parking administrator. So for parking matters, I am very much looking forward to having a new administrator who'll be able to come talk to you with a little bit more experience than I do. But council did ask us to look into the issues that, that are identified at this, I'm going to call it just the convention center, but it's the convention center, the sports center, the combined complex. In the combined complexes today, in the combined complex today, we have 2,372 spaces. That sounds like a lot of parking, but when we have overlapping events, it is, it is just not sufficient. It's not enough for both. And we identified that enforcement is, is just not practical. Because it's not a managed facility today, parking management does not generally patrol through the parking lot looking for issues. We, we do respond however, when we get calls from the convention and Visitors Bureau. There is no technology in the parking lots today. That means there's no technology that would allow a resident to identify which of the spots, which of the lots might have capacity. So as a result, we have people that are cruising through the lot looking for vacancies until they get frustrated and they might be late for their use activity or whatever the case might be. And that's, and sometimes we just see frustration parking where people just abandon their vehicle. And then one of the other issues and, and one of the things that I, I think bears mentioning is space turnover. And really, that's why we manage parking spots. It's, it's not a, it's not a matter of trying to generate revenue or anything like that. But really, the reason we manage parking is to allow for spaces to become open. When people pay a fee, they stay for a period of time. They don't want to pay more fee than they have to, therefore they turn over. That allows for new cars to come in and park and, and you have that turnover of the space for efficient use. At City Council's request, the Convention and Visitors Bureau and Parking Management evaluated possible options. And we did look at the potential for creating a managed space at the convention center. That space would of course have, be managed as in other spaces. There would be associated hourly fee and dynamic pricing as we do in other lots. What we think that this does, this is, it's not a silver bullet. Immediately, we don't just have more spaces. But it does encourage turnover. By charging, there is an incentive for people to not stay longer than they might otherwise do. Perhaps they're not going to stick around for somebody else's game or perhaps they're, they're going to leave and go get lunch and come back. But that creates some measure of turnover. It will allow us to have a funding source to allow parking management to do enforcement throughout the, the parking, the parking lots. It will allow us to have a funding source to invest in some technology that we would be able to put up some signage to maybe identify, to identify how many spots might be available in, say, the north lot or the south lot. So that when folks are coming in on 19th Street, they might be able to see, hey, there's, there's six spots available in this lot or there's no spots available on this lot. They know they don't have to turn in there and cruise up and down each and every aisle. And then lastly, we do think that this is, this funding source would allow us to work with other funding sources and assist in the construction of new facilities, such as the one that Deputy Manager Jarrett just talked about. Having said that, there are some issues that we know about in as far as were we to create this as a managed space. Parking accommodations are sometimes listed in contracts that the CBB has with their vendors or their activities. And of course, high school graduations would not, we would not want to desire to charge for high school graduation. I think it would be problematic and, and probably not in the best interest of the overall city. And then we also have to acknowledge that while this would be a managed space, it is proximate to the Atlantic Park area. And so there would be some spillover from Atlantic Park and resort area events. One of the things I did want to mention that this would be a standalone area. So it would be managed in such a way as to emphasize the needs for this district. Atlantic Park is its own district. We're looking at the resort area and trying to figure out how many districts should actually be in there. And, and we think that this actually will allow us to start managing each of these districts a little bit more effectively and in trying to maximize their use, determining when dynamic pricing is appropriate. So that perhaps if there's a large concert event and we're doing dynamic pricing at the Dome, we wouldn't have dynamic pricing at, say, the 9th Street Garage or the 31st Street Garage or at the convention center, that we're managing them independently, say, and separately. Next steps as we move forward, the Convention Visitors Bureau, it will be reviewing contracts to identify those clauses that I just talked about, those clauses that talk about parking and any promises that we may have made in the contracts. Parking management staff are, will be making preparations to develop signage and work with our vendor on enforcement. We are tentatively scheduling to begin that enforcement beginning April 1st, 2026. This would be a year-round managed facility, similar to our parking garages. And I think we have a couple of lots that are also year-round. And then Parking Management Staff will also begin shortly thereafter to develop a implementation of availability signage, trying to identify some of that technology that I was just talking about and putting that in place as funding allows. And with that, we're here for any questions or any thoughts, discussion that you'd like to have on that topic.
Okay, Stacy.
Thank you for the presentation. I see this come to fruition because I think it's an opportunity that we've been missing for several years. And having attended some of our events here locally, I will think it's safe to say, anybody that knows my history, I've spent more time at sporting events, traveling than most humans on earth. So I know the pain of trying to find a parking spot at an event like this. And, you know, I will say not only will most people not mind paying, but they would rather pay to have a spot, knowing they have a spot, versus showing up and having to spend time circling the parking lot wishing something, you know, will open up. So not only, you mentioned that it would encourage turnover, it's also going to greatly encourage carpooling and using shuttle services that are available at the resort area. So I think it just solved, it may not solve, but it will address a number of issues as it relates to parking. And I, I do agree with the assessment that we don't want to charge our citizens for, especially graduation, but maybe any kind of city event, city sponsored event. But this is to, you know, address the parking situation during these large events, especially sporting events, where people come from out of town and use their vehicles for transportation. So I, I think it's a well thought out plan. I think, I encourage it greatly. Thank you for doing all that hard work.
Okay, Amelia.
Yes, this is, thanks again. This is really great. Are you weighing the management, the staff against the price you'll be charging?
So that, that's the, that's the part of our next step is trying to identify what that fee will be. How we're going to have to figure out what the staffing is, what, what we think it's going to be. This is a dynamic space because we have some weekends that are lighter than others and some that are really, really heavy. We're going to do a little bit of analysis and try and, and work with Convention and Visitors Bureau and, or to, to identify the loading for what, what we think it'll be. It's going to take a little bit of work to try and figure out what that rate is going to be. But it will be managed, again, it's going to be managed as a separate, as a separate zone. So that zone might have a different pricing schedule than, say, the resort area. And it, and it likely will.
Thank you. This is great.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you, Mr. Hanson, for the presentation and the work on this. Couple things. First of all, this is my district, so I get a lot of communications in March and April when folks are looking for a place and their son or daughter is, or in a sporting event. So it's, this doesn't necessarily provide more parking, but I think it is a step in the right direction as we are looking at providing more parking, i.e. a parking deck on 19th Street, Parks Avenue, among other things. The sports center continues to thrive well. We've done, the new operator's done very well there. The convention center continues to perform. And then we do have Atlantic Park to the east. It's also performing well at this point and will continue to attract visitors. So it's part of a bigger plan and I appreciate it. Do we know yet how much would be our own citizens paying? I think we have a percent yet. Do we, is it 50/50? Is it 25/75? I do expect some pushback from local citizens on paying for parking. I mean, it's just part and parcel of doing business and I understand that pain, so I'd like to maybe ask that question.
I, I don't have an answer for, for you, sir.
I don't know how we track it because we don't track it now. So we don't really have a mechanism to be able to say who's a resident versus who's a tourist or visitor or guest. You know, so because we don't track, we don't have any mechanism to do that right now. But I assume you're right, sir. We will hear some good amount of pushback from some folks who don't, aren't typically used to paying for parking over here.
Okay, let's go with Josh and Rosemary.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a quick follow-up since you had mentioned that, council member. When we go, when we transition to, I guess, what, gateless, ticketless, will there be a way that we could, since we're looking at license plates, will we be able to tell who's coming from where naturally?
We have a limited ability to do so. We, it's, it's pretty easy to do it by state. So when, when you currently scan the QR code, you have to put your license plate in there. We have a limited ability to work with the state to get information about where that license plate is from. It can be a little bit challenging, especially given that we live in Hampton Roads and people move from Virginia Beach to Chesapeake and from Chesapeake to Portsmouth and Norfolk. And we, we move around a lot. It, it will tell us to some degree, but we don't have a great deal of specificity. It's easier, obviously, to tell if it's a Florida plate or if it's a Alabama plate or something like that.
Okay, Rosemary.
Parking continues to be our biggest challenge at the oceanfront. And there's, there's no more land to go. We've got a confined area. And so we're going to have to look at a myriad of ways to solve this problem. And this is one piece of that puzzle. And I think we've been very lucky and spoiled to have free parking all this time. To be able to, we're a victim of our own success and to be able to supply the, the need, we're going to have to look at other ways and this is one of them.
Anybody else at this point? You know, folks, as much as we hate to do it, I think this is the only option that we have right now. I think our ultimate goal in taking a look at our fiscal viability in the future is to have the oceanfront become a year-round operation. No shoulder season, no winter season. And find compelling reasons to bring people there. Action, sports, whatever it takes, concerts, wave pools and things of that nature. And, but once again, you know, once again, harkening, harkening back to being a district guy, a lot of people in the old Centerville District, you know, were adverse going to the oceanfront because they couldn't find parking. That was the number one reason why a lot of my neighbors, you know, really didn't want to quote inconvenience themselves and go because neither can't find parking or, and I'll tell you what, you know, the worst thing, input we get is when we read a letter to the editor from a visitor that, you know, got towed and things of that nature. So once again, it's up to us to find solutions and I think we've got to move in this direction. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're, I have some good council discussion and comments today. Okay, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things to share with you. The first is that on Saturday morning, I mentioned at our last meeting, we dedicated the Princess Anne Plaza Civic League signs. And it was really, really nice. And again, I want to thank all of the city professionals and the members of the Princess Anne Plaza Civic League for their advocacy. It's a unifying symbol of the Princess Anne Plaza community, more broadly, the Virginia Beach community. And we, we just really appreciate the support the city provided and also that this council provided as part of our budget to replace the historic signs that were damaged when an apparent drunk driver destroyed them. So it was really good and I want to thank you a lot for that. The other thing that I want to mention is that this weekend, we had special visitors from our sister city in Vibligen, Germany, visit Mayor Wolf and also Gabby, who's a longtime public servant from the city of Vibligen. They spent time with our Sister City Association, visiting multiple sites throughout Virginia Beach and affirming our shared commitment to these important local relationships that connect us through our transatlantic partnership around the values of peace, freedom, open society, democracy. And it's just a really nice opportunity to see how culture, commerce, and humanity can be strengthened and affirmed through relationships like what we have through Vibligen and our Sister City Association. I want to recognize the Sister City Association, particularly Maria, Weisenseal, and the entire committee for welcoming Mayor Wolf so warmly. And Mayor, I know you may have some reflections on that opportunity as well. And then I'd like to share one more thing about the Plaza Rescue Squad.
Oh, great, yes. It was a great opportunity. A while ago, a number of mayors from 757 went to, you know, to Germany to take a look at apprentice programs, internships and things of that nature. And, you know, I had the pleasure of meeting the mayor there. And last night, had the pleasure of having, you know, dinner with the mayor here. And, you know, it just broadens things. And there were members, representatives from Paulwood High School that we have an act of exchange program. You know, and then, you know, during my remarks, I said, boy, if the world isn't on fire, isn't it now? That we are building bridges literally thousands of miles long and trying to come together as a community and build, you know, the congeniality and warmth of, you know, I think our world, that's what we need. And then also, we're involved with the Philippines. We're involved with most Norway.
Northern Ireland.
Northern Ireland right now.
Yeah.
Japan. And, you know, and, you know, hopefully one day, you know, when things settle down, I spoke to the mayor in the Ukraine, you know, Odessa. You know, but once again, it just shows, you know, the heart and soul of Virginia Beach reaching out. Michael, I applaud you for your efforts.
Well, thank you for saying that, Mayor. I applaud the Sister City Association and our partnership with our international friends. And, you know, it just goes to show, I have to believe with the point, but governments can have disagreements, but people can make real, human, genuine connections that transcend time and political disputes. And that's what I think we're forging here through our Sister City Association.
Yeah, and the one thing that, you know, the mayor of, in Germany, they only got to run every eight years. Oh my goodness, yeah.
He's also the city manager as well. And finally, Mayor, if I could, I know a lot of other people have exciting things to share. This is a letter from the Princess Anne, or pardon me, from the Plaza Volunteer Rescue Squad. And it was sent to me by the squad commander, Kyle Musicant, Captain Kyle Musicant, and I would like to read it to you, if, if that's okay. So thank you. It says, "To the members of the Virginia Beach City Council, my name is Kyle Musicant and I am the captain and squad commander of the Plaza Volunteer Rescue Squad. I wanted to acknowledge a great event that has taken place within my squad that was made possible by this council. On September 21st, we had the privilege of putting our newest truck into service, a designated ambulance 1625. 1625 was built on a Chevy G4500 series chassis at the Atlantic Emergency Service Wheel Coach Factory in Winter Park, Florida. This ambulance is the sixth truck to be added to our fleet and its addition could not have come at a better time. Due to the age of the fleet and the current volume of calls that we answer to daily, this truck was welcomed by our membership in a time honored ceremony of pushing the truck in. The history of this ceremony goes back to the 17th century where early hand-drawn fire engines, ladder wagons, hose carts and other apparatus of the 17th century had to be pushed back into the station by hand after every call. The horse-drawn steam engines that followed- The horse-drawn steam engines that followed in the 18th century could be backed, could be backed. However, having to control the horses made it difficult to align the engine's steam connections with the station's steam connections. For this reason, the horses were typically disconnected, and the engine was again pushed back into the station by hand. On this day, the membership and family members helped us push in 1625 into its new home at Rescue Station 15 off Thalia Drive. The first crew, consisting of Maintenance Sergeant Thomas Prochillo and Supply Sergeant Glenn Halvert, took it out on its first dispatch and thereby officially placing the unit into service and making it Plaza's sixth truck to proudly serve the citizens of Virginia Beach. This was all possible from the generosity and cooperation of the city council and Virginia Beach EMS. From the men and women of the Plaza Volunteer Rescue Squad, we say thank you and look forward to many years of service. Signed, Kyle Musicant, Captain, Plaza Volunteer Rescue Squad." And I'll pass this letter around to all of you.
That's really kind of cool.
Isn't that nice?
Good stuff.
Nice getting a little bit of history.
Yeah, and they're, again, volunteers spending their time to serve and to protect and to support the health and well-being of all of our neighbors, and it's really great.
Okay, anybody else? Yeah, Cash, what were you doing this weekend?
Yes, so excited. We had the community come together. This weekend was Timberland Way weekend, and with that being said, I saw the strength of Virginia Beach come together in a very artistic way, right? And I want to give a special shout-out to our Virginia Beach Public Schools. It was the first time that I was able to see since living here where the city council and the school district worked in partnership to create a community event. And with that said, College Park, Salem Middle, and Salem High School, I think, received some checks from Timberland. And so he not only came back and received a key to the city, which we're thankful for, and then the street naming, but he came back to give back to those schools, which each of them got checks. So that was very, that was a proud moment to see the partnership that formed. And so I'm thankful for Virginia Beach. I'm thankful for this council, Councilman Roth, and thank you for being there on Saturday. And I know others, you guys had commitments, but everyone called me from this council and said, listen, I'm with you in spirit, so I'm so thankful for this council.
I was there, too.
And Chief Hutch was there. He was there with me at 9:00 AM, maybe before, but I had asked.
I think I was there first, but.
Play it back, play it back.
I thought that was his dis.
Well, it did.
He doesn't know, he doesn't know.
That's happenable.
So Hutch and I were there, and I said, Hutch, you read the proclamation, and he says, nobody, I want you to do it. And man, I tell you, we.
I didn't say I'd give you. An introduction, and he's.
The man needs no introduction.
We were, we were able to see the community come together in a very peaceful way. I'm thankful for our police department, Virginia Beach Police Department, excellent just direction in traffic and flow of traffic. I'm thankful for our fire department. I'm thankful for those that were behind the scenes. I'm thankful for our volunteers. I'm even thankful for Missy Elliott. She showed up.
In a big way.
In a big way. And she was at the street naming.
That's cool.
And she, it was a surprise because none of us knew she was coming, so I'm reading the proclamation. They said, stretch it out a little bit longer, we've got a special guest coming.
No problem.
And it was nice to see Timberland's mother there, his family was there, and that was a moment that was captured on photo, right? So they were so appreciative to this council and to the community, what we did for her son. And from there, you can just see that it just evolved to Salem High School, where a Dr. Robertson and his leadership, his team, I mean, he was decked out. And I'm thankful for George and his team. We had LED screens, and Pharrell patched himself, beamed himself in through the LED screens, right? And we had the kids and their expression. It was a very visual and performing arts weekend. The kids were doing dance moves that I couldn't, well, maybe I could do, but, but everything was done in decency and in order. And from there, we flowed into the Mocha. That was an expression where we did a VA Fashion Week. Ann, who does VA Fashion Week at the Mocha, just really brought it home to a crescendo where we advertised new clothing lineups. That was my first time ever really being a part of a fashion show. So Virginia Beach knows how to.
It's fashion.
Can you believe it? I was there with my sunglasses on because that's what you do at a fashion show.
Especially if you forget your glasses.
What? I don't know. Yes. So I forgot my reading glasses, and Chief Hutch had to help me with that again. So thank you, Chief Hutch. I was thankful to be honored by Senator Rouse and Mrs. Rouse. Thank you for being in attendance. And a special surprise, your son was actually a part of the show. And so it was just a very fantastic event where it was collaboration, it was community. And we even, Virginia Beach, last point, we even flowed into Norfolk. We went to the Norva, and the Norvas were at Timberland and all of the, it was like a reunion for them. All of the producers that were with Timberland, we had an event at the Norva, which was very musical, very talented. We showcased some of our new artists that are rising up with, you know, I'm not very musical, but I was there tapping my feet and moving around, and my wife was there encouraging me. So, long story short, we had a very safe weekend. It was an economic, I think, boom for our city. Restaurants were impacted in a good way. People ate our food, people dined in our restaurants. What it did for me, and this is my last point, is that it's something that we shouldn't stop, but we should continue, recognizing our legends, recognizing those who have put us on the map. And so I'm thankful for this council. I'm thankful for the school districts. I'm thankful for our police department. George, who's in the audience, I'm thankful for you building that stage that was constructed with strength, stability, because the mayor and I, we were going back and forth, and it was just solid as can be. And thank you, Mayor, for your kind words that you spoke. We don't give keys to the city to just anyone. And so it was a very thoughtful, deliberate council and mayor decision to give a key to the city, to Timberland, which he, from this point on, is connected to us. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to give compliments to Councilmember Green. I guess every group of councilperson has their baptism of fire and trying to put together a major project, and I'll tell you what, you know, when thrown through some challenges, it turned out to be a grand slam. And what really impressed me, you know, was sitting on the stage, there was so much local talent out there that, you know, we just have to be really cognizant of, you know, we are indeed blessed. And in my comments, I remember sitting there looking at the crowd, and what is, thank you, but the bleachers were about three-quarter full, and then you had a bunch of folks sitting on the front lawn.
Oh, yeah.
And the thing is, what impressed me, you know, it was a beautiful mosaic of all the people that make up Virginia Beach, regardless of race, economics, I mean, you name it. And the point is there, they were there because it just proves that music can bring people together. And as Michael Malucci says, arts can bring people together. And I'll tell you what, we can't control what goes on in Washington and Richmond, but we have the same in Virginia Beach. And I'll tell you what, I think that we really defined what Virginia Beach is about, took a lot of tremendous amount of coordination, and I'll tell you what, it's, you know, it's something that we can be proud of, and let's do more of it. Yep, Hutch, and then Amelia.
So just to follow on. Much briefer than. It was, it was a fantastic event and weekend, and my tip I had to you, buddy, you put a lot of work into it. It was appreciated all around, and you could tell that there was a lot of good love out there, so it was really nice. Two people, two other groups that I think we want to thank is, there were several, like, school buses, drivers, a couple of bands, I think it was Hallwood was going to Richmond, so they had to be, like, had to be coordinated to get them in and be part of it, and then take them up to Richmond for a big event. So that happened, so we had a lot of school bus drivers. And then I believe somebody might help me out, it was Parks and Rec with the signage and actually unveiling the.
Public Works was, I started to say Public Works, and then after some reason, I was thinking the signage might have been, but Public Works, what a great crew. They helped us with the, with the street closures, you know, it was a little bit tricky, Pleasant Valley to Lynn Haven, just some unsung stuff that didn't take but a few minutes, but they were able to make it happen smoothly, and I really appreciate that, making that happen. As we know, Lynn Haven Parkway is, you know, it's not an easy, you start shutting Lynn Haven Parkway down, so I thought that was very good. Then to continue on with the art theme, it was a busy day in District One slash District Seven.
Yes.
We had, and then the, and I might need some help with this, too, it's the Community Art Grants.
Creative Neighborhood.
How was it called?
Creative Neighborhood.
Creative Neighborhood. We got a pump track at Brigadoon for the kids that was freshly, freshly done up. The artist was there and everything, and the kids were riding it. It was impressive, it was probably 100 people for that event. So I left from one and went to the other, as Councilman Green stayed with the larger event, of course. But it was well-attended, and what if, you can see it from Lynn Haven Parkway, it's bright purple and some other colors, and to see the kids using it already, I thought was pretty cool. So that was a good thing for Brigadoon. Thank you.
Good. Amelia.
Well, I want to thank Councilmember Green. He really did a good show, from the poolside all the way through. He was very courteous, and it went well. There was no raucous or anything like that. Also, there were two young ladies I want to mention.
Yes.
Who were also Tamaya Davis and Michelle, his cousin, who were kind of behind the scene, but they were strong, very strong women going through that event all the way to the end. Her sister came, not real sister, but they've grown up together, that came out, too, Keisha, to walk along with her, came in from Atlanta just for that show. So you've earned your stripes.
Thank you.
Good. Josh and Ross.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilwoman Ross, having you reminded me, and I was able to attend on Friday, and it blew me away. You did a great job. Everybody there did a great job. The young singer there, phenomenal. The catering, whoever donated that, like, and the guy who owned the restaurant was there, really very, very nice. And it also reinforced me, reinforced in my mind how awesome an event venue the Mocha is in that, in that atrium. So we got to be really thoughtful about, like, how we make sure that, for community use. But these amazing students from Norfolk State.
Yes.
In the technology program and how they're.
Denimists.
I mean, it's just unbelievable. They were, they were connected through Dominion, I think. And then I also met people from all over the country there, all over the place, and some really big people in the entertainment industry that were there, just kind of on a low-key basis. Anyway, great job.
Thank you.
Yep. And Ross?
Thank you, Mayor, and I also want to follow on, you know, Councilman Green, but also the city, George Akraz and everyone else who put a lot of time, talent, and treasure into this, the Mocha attended also. How many people were involved around the city, not just with the Saturday morning parade and the ribbon cutting and the key, but just Friday night, there was two events on Friday, the Sunday fashion show, the technology emphasis on Friday night, the fashion show, of course, on Sunday. What a great event, Cash, so congratulations, and also our city. We do need to celebrate our talent. So on a different note, on a lot less fun, code enforcement at the oceanfront.
Back to reality.
I'm not talking about parking. Sorry, I'm not talking about parking or taxes, but the next best thing, code enforcement at the oceanfront. Thanks to you all, we had the resolution back in August or so about the vulgar T-shirts. The Planning Department, along with the Resort Management Office, has done a sweep of Atlantic Avenue and has enforced our codes, building codes and compliances that the retailers have to comply with. I've heard a lot of feedback from a lot of folks on a particular code that requires retailers to not put or not place merchandise within three feet of an exterior window. And there's reasons why for that, but in talking with Mayor Dyer and some others, Councilman Shulman, Vice Mayor Wilson, I'd like to ask this body, if you all would join me in actually turning away or terminating that provision in our code compliance, requiring retailers to not place items within three feet of a window. They pay dearly in rent or on the property for that space and not in, on the window, that's not allowed, but three feet within the window. So, Mr. City Manager, what's next steps?
So, Mr. Mayor, if council is amenable to that, what next steps would look like would be, I'll give the planning director direction to take this to the Planning Commission, and then the Planning Commission would, will review this and give council an advisory recommendation as it relates to amending the zoning code to make such a change. You know, so it wouldn't be something that the council could do by itself. I think it would have to go through the Planning Commission process.
Good. Jennifer?
Initial resistance to that. As part of that feedback, I'd just like to know why, what was the reason behind that policy?
Not, I'm not sure.
It may be part of the work they do, and they.
If we could probably, we could look into the research and the history and the context behind it, but it probably was trying to solve for a problem, probably that 80s or 90s or something like that, to keep certain merchandise away from the front.
All the T-shirts.
Yeah.
Cash, did you have something?
I do. You guys want to say? There are two more organizations I would like to mention, Poolside Cooking. Jimella runs Poolside Cooking. It is a television program that's designed around cooking. She and her staff are wonderful. Then a special shout-out to Hampton University, who made the trip down here to support our endeavors, and their marching band was incredible. They put on a show, they really, and they did it for the purpose of saying they appreciate our relationship that we have with Hampton. And so, Mayor, that's your work that you've done, which made them be committed to showcasing the marching band. So thank you for your leadership in allowing that to happen.
Well, I tell you, I got to give a shout-out to Bill Thomas, who's Hampton University's Government Affairs Liaison. I've known him for years. He gave me a call and said, a request was made by Cash, and I, you know, what did I think? And I'll tell you what, it just made it a regional event, and that was kind of cool. Okay, anybody else?
Stacy?
We had our town hall meeting last night at, at the Central Library. We spoke about the referendum, and I'd like to thank the city attorney and the deputy city attorney did a wonderful job. And we also had a discussion on the e-bike situation in Virginia Beach, and I will gladly say that we had 60 volunteers to be on the task force. So how many we need, but there should be no shortage of people that want a piece of that.
So we got a rugby squad.
So, yeah, a lot of interest, a lot of, people were very vocal about their feelings, so.
Absolutely. Okay, Barbara?
This Thursday, Fourth Thursday is the monthly meeting for District Two for form. We have a lot of activity. We have a lot of activity going on, a lot of issues, as you well know. So we're looking forward to a good forum this Thursday night, five fifteen to seven, Building Nineteen.
Okay, anyone else at this point? Alrighty, okay, how about agenda reading?
I have the agenda. So the only item that we have speakers on is number seven on the ordinance and legislation, that's the ninth, asking Rose. So our ordinance and resolutions, notwithstanding the legislative package, does anybody have any issues with any of the others? And then the charter change, we're going to be bringing that till November eighteenth. Legislative agenda?
Yeah, just want to say a couple of things. Just, it's not so much, it's about the process. We talk about more and more about how this group is working together and gelling and doing good things, and I do think we are. I don't, as y'all know, I've already spoke through this, I didn't, I didn't care for the way the local option part was added. I think we could do better having discussions. We do a lot of discussions and it's a good thing and I say it to the public, my back is to the gallery, so I feel like I should be turned to them. But there are times when we have to talk and we have the rule, we can't talk with three of us. And I really think that's, I voiced that with the city attorney. I think that's very problematic, but it is what it is. No fault of yours, Mark. Turkey. But you had to tell me the hard truth. But just in a more serious thing is, is that I, I do have some experience in some very well-oiled machines running as a group. Very fortunate to sit at the end of the table with the fire department for a number of years and the USR team and some other homeless issues. I've been on boards and different things. And I just think we've got to work a little bit better, a little more about what, put the politics aside and work together. We can disagree. I know we're going to do that. I mean, that's part of what we're here for, right? Is to have those times when we're not all, not all on the same sheet of music. I get that. But I just, I just think it's been a couple of times now that I, I would, I would rather us have some discussions beforehand and so that you know what's coming. I just think it would be a better way, a better way moving forward. I think it would be better for our employees. I think it would be better for the citizens. It just, it just doesn't feel quite set for me. I'm not, I'm not calling one single individual out or anything like that. I'm just more saying as a group, I think it's something for us to strive for.
Hey, Hutch, you know, certainly respect what, what you say, but you know, let me put it this way, one, you know, hey, listen, I'm in the mayor week position here. I'm just a guy with the gavel, but I'm also the guy that, you know, kind of, you know, drives the agenda and everything. And, you know, a lot of times people will request to me, even at the last minute.
Yep, I get it.
To put something on the agenda. And the thing is, don't forget, it was, was presented at the time when there was, it was just as a markup, it was an add-on and still subject to discussion and scrutiny going forward. And whether we like it or not, the only time that I think we really kind of get bipartisan is around the time, you know, when we do the legislative agenda. But the point is, you know, how do we, you know, that was a, you know, point of contention. As a matter of fact, the General Assembly, if it wasn't for the veto of a governor, we would be burdened with collective bargaining. And as a matter of fact, it might have included constitutional officers. That was totally out of the control. So if anybody's been blindsided, you know, with things, whether it be a new voting district or things like that, you know, I think, you know, maybe we got to build a better collaboration, you know, with the General Assembly and hash this all out. So when we do put stuff together, it'll be good.
Yeah, just, I'm more speaking of us, but I hear you. I know you, what you're saying.
Yeah, please.
In a perfect world, I, I think you're right. Unfortunately, we're not in a perfect world and that, that issue was not the only one, the charter change, we're having to defer that. And that was brought up in August, well ahead. And we had a last minute change of that that really needs to go back and have another public hearing on. So I mean, I would have liked to pass that to Mike too, but that's being deferred because of a last minute change. So in, I agree with you in a perfect world, but we unfortunately.
Yep, and I get it. And I've been accused of having rose colored glasses, you know, so I, I think, I think sometimes I strive for that, set upper level group and it, and I've had to be a part of it where your lives depended on it at some point, not to be melodramatic, but it's what, it's what we, it's what we, we argue, fuss and fight, you know, that's, that's all right. You know, I grew up that way, but I think at times that's, it's just how I think we should be striving for.
Now, but you know, and Hutch, you know, let me say, and I agree in that, and you know, during the time I've known you as the chief and everything, I have nothing but respect for you. But then even, you know, at a meeting at kind of last minute, Chief Pravis came in, said he needed 60 people and we figured out a way. We needed more money for, you know, cancer screening. We found a way. We needed more equipment. We found a way. Police came in and said they needed a salary survey. We found a way. You know, we find ways. And sometimes I wear rose colored glasses too and I'll lend them to Cash if you ever want.
If we can move on to planning, District Two, Number One, Little Bonafant. I haven't heard of the other. Number two, Alma Properties, District Four.
I have two or three. I'm going to have to abstain.
Same here, Vice Mayor Wilson. Just not on two, but just, well, yes, two and three.
We're on the ordinances, right?
Number four, Bradley and Betty, excuse me, Betty Kane, District Three.
Yes, Vice Mayor, that's a request for deferral from the applicant. You may recall the residential kennel. I mean, did I say deferral? I meant withdrawal.
This is the thirteen dogs, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Number five, ASC Real Estate, District Two. Need to be pulled. And number six, Fifty Twenty Three, Virginia Boulevard, District Four again.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meetings allowed by Section 2.237 11A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A seven, and that would be Atlantic Park. Public contract, discussions of the award of public contract involving the expenditures of public funds and discussions of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or a negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A twenty-nine, and that would be Atlantic Park. And then publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for the purpose or the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A three. And that would be districts one, three, four, five, six, eight. District, no, District Seven? Oh my God.
They got enough.
Only kidding. Oh, there's a District Seven down the line there. There we go. Line two, District Six, District Seven and Six. Okay, and then personnel matters, discussion, considerations or interviews for the prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disappointing or resignation from a specific public officer's appointees or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A one. Counsel appointees, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies and appointees. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Aye.
Go for it, Tom.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Governor Rollins. Aye. Governor Rouse.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are recessing to close. Hey, and welcome. I call this to order and if you could kindly, at this point, if you are willing and able to stand for the invocation. Heavenly Father, you are always with us and beside us. Be with us this evening as we consider the affairs of council to our great city. Give us the patience to listen, the wisdom to decide and the strength to act. Amen. And if I may ask for a moment of silence to all of those who pay the ultimate price to make our city and nation so great. Thank you and pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have a roll call?
I'll present, Your Honor.
Okay, ask for a motion for the certification of the closed session.
Second.
One second. The vote is open. Councilman Henley, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. By a vote of eleven to zero, you certify the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
Thank you. Now moving on, could we have a motion to certify the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of October seventh, 2025 and the formal session of October fourteenth, 2025?
Still moved?
Second.
The vote is open.
Alrighty.
You can do yes on one and you'll have to say on the one you missed. I know, but just, so just do it, put yes and then state, state it for the record. By a vote of eleven to zero, you approve the minutes as submitted. However, Councilmember Rouse needs to make a statement.
Okay, at this point, we're going to have a mayor's presentation to a very special awardee. Could we have the members of John Aragona? Come on up. Come on up. Come on, the whole family. Okay, and we're going to ask Vice Mayor Wilson to go ahead and read it.
We're so happy you're there with us tonight. Whereas John Aragona was a self-made man who immigrated to the United States from Italy in 1922 through Ellis Island at the age of seventeen. And whereas John Aragona began his career as a carpenter in New York and years later moved his family to Virginia Beach. And whereas in the 1950s, John Aragona took a significant leap of faith, purchasing nearly 1,000 acres of farmland in what was then a remote area of Princess Anne County, which he later developed into Aragona Village. And whereas John Aragona was a true visionary and is considered the first modern day developer when Aragona Village became the area's first full-fledged housing development, which included 3,200 homes starting at $7,000. How about that? And whereas in May of 1957, John Aragona donated 13.01 acres of land designated as school site located at forty-seven twenty-two Jericho Road to the Princess Anne County School Board. And whereas in 1958, Aragona Elementary School grades one through eight opened. As the school board constructed new school buildings to house the growing student population, Aragona Elementary was reduced to a K-five school in the late 1960s. Eventually, the Aragona Elementary building was repurposed for various uses. And whereas John Aragona also developed a public utility station, Aragona Utilities in 1963. Princess Anne County merged with Virginia Beach and Aragona Utilities was subsequently purchased by the City of Virginia Beach in 1974. And whereas John Aragona continued to invest in the City of Virginia Beach in developing the Aragona Shopping Center in 1962, Princess Anne Plaza, Bay Creek Golf and Country Club, I mean, excuse me, Bow Creek Golf and Country Club, Magic Hollow and Lagomar, which was also quite isolated at the time. And whereas on August 12th, ninth, 2025, the Virginia Beach School Board adopted the resolution negotiation for disposition of certain Jericho Road properties, which directs the superintendent and the legal counsel to work with the city representatives to negotiate mutual agreeable farms, terms and conditions to transfer the land once donated by Mr. Aragona to the city for a public park site, open space and passive recreation and for other limited public purposes that support the public infrastructure compatible with the community needs of the surrounding neighborhoods. And whereas on this day, we honor a true visionary for his forward thinking and investment into the housing developments and businesses that are spread throughout and are a vital part of the backbone of the city of Virginia Beach. And now therefore be resolved that the Virginia Beach City Council pause in its deliberations to express its appreciation to the family of the late John Aragona for his commitment, generosity, belief, investment and service to our city. And this is adopted by the Council of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, on the 21st day of October, 2025, and present this resolution duly signed by each member of the Virginia Beach City Council.
Sure, sure, yes. Can I just say something real quick? I just, thank you, just real quick. My name is Jenny Cincilio Cross and I am the daughter of Rachel Aragona Cincilio. On behalf of our entire family, which is very large, we are deeply honored to receive this resolution for our grandfather, John Aragona, in recognition of his significant contributions to the city of Virginia Beach back in his day in the fifties. We extend a special thank you to Vice Mayor Rosemary Wilson, Kathleen Brown, School Board Chairwoman, and Lorraine Smacko, President of the Aragona Village Civic League, for their leadership and for seeing this through. We are truly grateful. We have a large family. My grandfather had five, our grandfather had five children and then we have lots of offspring and husbands and spouses, but we're very proud and very honored tonight for you, for the council to recognize his accomplishments and what he did early on in the city. Thank you. I was going to introduce everybody, but it's a lot of.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, really, okay, thank you.
Greg, come on over this way a little bit. We've done this a couple hundred times before. I'll be smiling back here.
Just look at the camera for a second, or two, or three, or four.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Thank you all. It's always great to honor people who deserve honors. It really helps so many people make our city so great. All right, good job. Okay, now is the bid opening for the non-exclusive franchise agreement for to use the city property operating a cable television system. Madam Clerk, do I have to read the whole thing?
That's a question for the city attorney, I believe.
Yes, please.
Okay. There, oh, here we go. There's a Cliff Notes version right here next to the term sheet. Okay, pursuant to the Virginia Code 15.2, I will now summarize the bids that have been received for the proposal renewal franchise agreement to construct, operate, and maintain a cable system in the City of Virginia Beach. One bid has been received. Cox Communications Hampton Roads LLC has bid for a right to place a cable system, equipment, and facilities in the public rights away in Virginia Beach for the term of ten years with an option for one five-year extension upon written mutual agreement in accordance with the terms specified in the Cable Television Franchise Renewal Agreement negotiated within the city. Are there any other persons desiring to submit a bid at this time? There being no further bids, the bidding is closed. City staff has evaluated the bids received and recommends that Cox Communications Hampton Roads LLC be awarded a Cable Television Franchise Renewal Agreement. We now open a public hearing for the purpose of the franchise renewal to construct, operate, and maintain a cable system in Virginia Beach. Are there any speakers?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. And that concludes that. Moving on now to public hearings. First is proposed, the agreement there, we took care of that. Next is the lease of property, T-Mobile Northwest LLC, five parking spaces on top of level of the parking deck of the 31st Street Parking Garage, installing and maintaining antennas and radio equipment. Are there any speakers?
There are no speakers, sir.
Okay, and then finally, declaration and conveyance of excess property to Bars Road LLC, or three parcels in Burton Station, known as 12291231 and 1249 Bars Road Ray Future Pump Station Site.
No speaker, sir.
Okay, at this point, I will move forward and do the speaker script. I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on a single item. Speakers are reminded that the comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by the council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker may wish to have up to three minutes to speak on any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent items, the speaker will have a cumulative time of six minutes to address those items. Again, speaker must leave in his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they are signed up to address. And finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber, you know, to be civil under discussions and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the city council wants to hear from you and ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Are there any single item speakers?
Yes, sir. One for L3, which is the Legislative Agenda, Ernest Dox. Mr. Dox, you may go on up.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, I just wanted to make.
Help is on the way.
So on the.
Is it not working? I'll pull the microphone back to the floor.
So on the Legislative Agenda, they wanted to send it to the state. On there, there's a section about transportation, and I just want to make, if they're going to make transportation a priority, they need to maintain bus stops such as the one over near the convention center, the, between HRT and Parks and Recreation, they even been maintaining that area where the bus stops are. So, you know, for people to take public transportation, it might make sense to make the bus stop areas look more appealing maybe, and, you know, accessible to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Sir, that's the only, that's the only one speaker that we have on, anything on the consent agenda, sorry.
Okay, can I ask the Vice Mayor to do the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under ordinances and resolutions, the ordinance to amend City Code Section 7-1, 7-10, and 7-59.1, ray wheel devices or vehicles in the resort area. Number two is the resolution to request the General Assembly in Section 2.03 to the City Charter to require a supermajority vote to approve certain land use approvals south of the Blue Line, and we're recommending this to be deferred until November 18. Number three is the resolution to adopt the city's 2026 Legislative Agenda. Number four is the resolution to nominate Thomas M. Leahy, Philip A. Devonport, and Mary Frankenfield to the governors as candidates to the position of local representative for the term of office commencing January 1, 2026, to the Southeastern Public Service Authority, SIPSA. Number five is the resolution to authorize city support for Virginia Beach Restaurant Week, and that's requested by Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and council members Brucchi, Remick, and Schulman. Number six is the ordinance to authorize the acquisition of an agricultural land preservation easement from Bonnie G. Bright, 90.77 plus or minus acres, the issuance by the city of the contract obligations in the maximum principal amount of $1,523,773, and transfer funds to purchase U.S. Treasury strips. Number eight is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a lease, 60 months, Ray Office Base in the Judicial Center at 2425 Nemo Parkway, with the Commonwealth of Virginia Court of Appeals of Virginia. Number nine is the ordinance to extend date to satisfy the conditions, the matter of Matthew E. Mancole and Robert A. Mancole regarding closure of an unapproved unnamed alley adjacent to the rear of 21954th Street. Number 10 is the ordinance to extend the date for satisfying the conditions in the matter of Whitney B. Elliott Ray closure of one half of a unique, unapproved unnamed alley adjacent to the rear of 21855th Street, and that's Unit B. Number 11 is a resolution to approve attainable workforce housing performance grant to Grand Legs LP authorize the city manager to execute the grant agreements and supporting agreement, and request the Virginia Beach Development Authority to approve the grant. Number 12 is a resolution to approve attainable workforce housing performance grant to the Silo Apartments LP authorize the city manager to execute the grant agreement and support agreement, and request the Virginia Beach Development Authority to approve the grant. Number 13 is the ordinance to appropriate $72,000 from the Tourism Investment Program tip fund balance to the FY 2025-26 Convention and Visitors Bureau operating budget, and authorize the city manager to execute a sponsoring agreement with Max Media of Hampton Roads LLC, regan party at the Pier Concert Series to begin April 2026. Number 14 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $259,904.75 from the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority to the FY 2025-26 Human Services Operating Budget, and authorize $77,564 as matching funds for regional recovery high school support efforts to mitigate the ongoing opioid epidemic. Number 15 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $201,001 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to the FY 2025-26 Human Services Operating Budget Ray Workforce Development Programs. Number 16 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $300 from the Virginia Development Department of Emergency Management to the FY 2025-26 Emergency Management Operating Budget Ray support the activities of local emergency management agencies in establishing, maintaining, and operating emergency plans, programs, and capabilities to deal with nuclear accidents.
Open a public hearing on planning?
Number one is Phil M. Bonifant, notification of conditions to a conditional use permit Ray assembly use at 2442244 and 2252 Indian River Road, and that's in District 2. Number two is Elmer Properties Virginia Beach LLC, 3909 Virginia Beach Boulevard LLC, for modification of the conditions to a conditional use permit Ray motor vehicle sales at 3909 Virginia Beach Boulevard, District 4, with Councilman Green and Councilman.
Cummings.
Cummings abstaining. Number three is Elmer Properties Bonnie Road LLC, Bruce B. Mills Revocable Trust, and Adams Outdoor Limited Partnership to a conditional use permit Ray bulk storage yard at 3890, 3894, and 3898 Virginia Beach Boulevard, District 4, again with Councilman Greens and Cummings abstaining. Number four, Bradley and Eddie Kane for conditional use permit Ray residential kennel at 405 Kings Point Court, District 3, and that is for withdrawal. Number five is to pull. Number six is 5073 Virginia Beach Boulevard LLC for conditional use permit Ray automobiles, garage, and conditional use permit Ray motor vehicles, sales, and rentals at 245 Pennsylvania Avenue, and that is in District 4. Move for approval.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Open a vote.
The vote is open.
Okay, there we go.
Councilmember Cummings, may I have your vote, please? You do yes, and then you, because you, I'll state your abstention. Thank you. By a vote of eleven to zero, approve the agenda as read, consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson, noting Councilmember Cummings and Jackson Green abstention letters.
Okay, we're going to hear item number seven, ordinance to declare city on property of 333 Laskin Road to be in excess of the city's needs, and authorize city manager to purchase agreement for to sale the property of Virginia Beach Laskin Road LLC Ray Development unto multifamily residential, commercial, and structured parking facility deferred from September. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. The first speaker is Andy Schiff. And then will be Ashley Wilshire.
Ashley is just going to read a statement from the two of us.
That's okay.
Hey, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ashley Wilshire. On behalf of my family, I would like to thank you for providing my cousin Andy Schiff and me the opportunity to speak regarding our request to purchase 333 Laskin Road. For over 60 years, our family has owned and managed the neighboring properties on Laskin Road, as well as the parking lot behind. When the resort area strategic plan was introduced in 2008, laying out its vision for the area, we took note, and due to our property's age, began planning for our eventual redevelopment. From that point forward, we decided that all new leases would have an initial one-year lease term, then convert to month-to-month. All tenants were aware that due to the age and deteriorating condition of our property, it was going to be necessary to redevelop in the near future. It has always been of utmost importance to us to work with our tenants to the greatest extent possible. We're proud of helping support the local community and its businesses for the past many decades. We understand that there has been concern about the redevelopment of the site, and we want to emphasize that we have been working with the tenants and the local community and plan to continue to do so throughout the redevelopment process. The sale of 333 Laskin Road is just the first step of the process, and there are many more steps along the way. We will continue to engage with the community and the tenants to solicit their input and to keep them informed of the plans for the site. Additionally, we will be working with the city and the tenants to extend the term of their lease for a fixed period while they look for new homes for their businesses. Thank you all for your time, and we look forward to working with the city and the community to fulfill the vision of the strategic plan for the Laskin Road Gateway.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thanks a bunch.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Rob Beaman. Okay, thank you. Adam Appleton. This is our Adam Appleton. Alan Hartcourt. Alan Hartcourt. Rain Span. Are you Mr. Span? Okay, come on up. And after Mr. Span will be Jonathan Langman.
Good evening.
You hear me well? Cool. It's my first time actually coming here, and the main reason why I wanted to come is because I've been a member of the creative community in Virginia Beach pretty much my entire life, was, you know, moved here when I was young, went to elementary school, middle school, high school. school, high school, college, started my career here, started my engineering career here, all of that good stuff. And I've seen over the past, I guess, 10 years, the creative community and the creative ecosystem really grow, you know, starting with the Vibe District, with Pharrell's initiatives, and, you know, the small shops that are currently where they're going to be purchasing, purchasing the property from. They've also lent a really, really great atmosphere to just us being able to come into these spaces and create our work and share our work and speak with people and do all the other things that, you know, makes a creative community really thriving and really lends to the overall community as well. So I'm not here to really say, you know, things shouldn't happen or, because I know there's a lot more that goes into it than just what we want as one community. I know that you guys have a lot more responsibilities to a lot of other communities, so collaboration is necessary. But what I will say is that when I was reading about the initiative is that, you know, there are a lot of things that are in place to help the business owners. And I just want to also say that I think that the increase in pricing as far as like rent and everything like that over the next couple of years, I think that should be taken into a little bit more consideration. I read that it was 30 months, and, you know, I don't really know their exact financial situations, but I would imagine that a little bit over two years won't be enough for, you know, them to be able to keep what they have and be able to relocate in a timely manner. And I would just like to also say that, that, yeah, it's really important for us to have those spaces, and I think it's important for the city to also look at those spaces. It's not just shops that can be, you know, removed or, you know, changed and stuff like that. It's part of the culture, and culture is a big part of Virginia Beach, you know? I think we all can, you know, attest to that. And so, yeah, I think that just a little bit more consideration about it would be, you know, really, really beneficial, and it would also touch the hearts of everyone that lives in Virginia Beach. So that's all I have to say today.
Yeah, let me just say that, you know, we do take the creative, you know, culture very seriously. I work with my dear friend Gabe Niles and everything, and with the Vibe and everything. There will be other opportunities, and I'll give you, I can pretty much give you an assurance that you will be, you will be noticed. Thank you.
Mayor Dyer, I can also just add, thank you for coming forward. Thank you for everything that you're doing. I hope you still will be engaged throughout this process and, of course, in our city. So thank you for coming forward.
Yeah, of course, absolutely.
The next speaker is Jonathan Langman. And after Mr. Langman is Holly Marchier.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here tonight. I am Jonathan Langman. I am a tenant, and I'm owner of Ace Gallery, and one of the buildings connected and owned by Andy Schiff. We've been there for three years now, and this building is in the center of the recently designated artery district, which is home to the fine and culinary arts. I think we got that designation earlier this year. Raising this building will not only change the physical landscape, it will also change the cultural landscape in Virginia Beach. There are two art galleries housed on this block, Beach Gallery, as well as my gallery, Ace Gallery, and that's two of only three galleries within this arts district. So we'll be down to one, and that would be Stravitz on the far, far end. We've hosted many local artists and given them a home to showcase their art and supported this local community. Most recently, we've been hosting events, supporting local artists, DJs, rappers. Just last weekend, we hosted Timbaland as part of this Timbaland Way Weekend, and we got a behind-the-scenes look at how he produced the music and beats and how the culture of Virginia Beach influenced him. Our current exhibit in the gallery received a grant from you from the Virginia Beach Cultural Fairs and showcases a local rapper and artist blending technology, music, and arts. We've hosted you, Bobby Dyer, Mayor Dyer, with a cultural debate with Gabe Niles last summer. So this community has centered around the arts, and we're worried that if this building is razed, we will not have a home. We look across the street at the Gold Key Property. Those businesses are in and out every five or six months. They cannot be supported there. The rents are too high. So we're looking to you. We can't, the reason we are here is because it's an aging building. It has character, it has nostalgia. It's something, it's an old part of Virginia Beach that everybody feels comfortable in. They don't feel comfortable going into these new buildings. It's this old piece of home that people really feel comfortable in and that we are continuously stripping Virginia Beach of. The city's redevelopment plans, while understandable from a growth urban planning perspective, repeatedly under values, and this litter of acronyms for you, Mr. Dyer, repeatedly under values community cultural capital. We continue to build these buildings, and we're not supporting the culture and trying to bring them back in. We've built something over the last five years, and we're afraid that that was all for naught. Thank you.
Hey, thanks for coming. Yeah, Joe.
Thank you very much, sir, for coming. I just have a couple of quick questions for you. As far as I understand the situation, the property owner has most of the block except for this one piece of property, that's city property. And I've visited the shops. I think it's a really very cool eclectic environment, and all the retailers in there just are really cool. They have lots of unique things that they, that y'all even sell. My, I'm just, just saying out loud, even if we don't agree, I guess, to sell this Papa John's lot or the property to the property owner, they would still potentially most likely redevelop that property because it's an aging building, and we've heard, I think, from them that, you know, it's beyond, the roof in particular is kind of beyond the point where they can't keep throwing Band-Aids on it. So I think if, I'm just, I'm putting that to you just to kind of hear what your response to that would be, because even if we don't agree to, I guess, move forward, that there will likely still be something happening there.
Sure. So the sale of Papa John's isn't just the sale of a quarter acre, it also comes with a timeline from you. So that's our biggest concern, is that if we do have this sale, now we have our builders up against the clock, knowing that they have to do something within, I think it's two years or 30 months or three years, I'm not sure what the timeframe is. I think that's our biggest fear, is that if they do get this Papa John's, we are most likely heading into a recession, possibly looking at longer term. So my fear is that we're going to all be displaced and nothing's even going to be able to be built, just based on the economy.
And that property owner, the landlord's communication with you throughout, I guess, the last couple of years, as you've been a tenant, the relationship has been good, and even with this issue, are they, they still are communicating with you, and do you see potential to be able to work with them for, you know, for us, an extended stay that would suit your needs at least a little better, or?
Sure, sure. I think he's offered a 30-month lease extension at this point. The only thing that doesn't feel good about that is that we've been month-to-month for three or four years, so why are we going to sign a 30-month extension to lock us into this building that is going to be torn down when it's the same lease terms that I have right now that are month-to-month? So he has been in communication with us, been a great owner, never had any issues. If we've had any issues with the building, he's quick to fix them. I know it's been, the narrative has been that it's an aging building, but it's an aging building with character.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, yeah, Stacy. So your hesitation to sign a 30-month lease is a business decision?
Correct.
And do you think the owner of the property has the right to make their own business decisions?
No comment on that. I wouldn't know how to rate his business decisions.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right, thanks a bunch for coming.
Thank you, Mayor Bar.
The next speaker is Holly Marchier, and then Natalie Ramos.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for having me. Again, I forgot to bring something. Short-term memory loss. I meant to bring my water bill also. About the building, I don't think it's fair to these people, you know, just to take over. I think it's wrong, and I just heard about it today. I was like, what's going on? I don't think it's fair to these people who lose their business. Building, 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 I've had it. You've built so much already, it's like enough is enough. I know it goes in one or another half the time when I talk here, but it's just annoying. It's aggravating when you, see, people are going to lose their business because of, you know, you guys, and I think it's wrong for you to do these people. I'm just disgusted. The city is like, get me sick, but I can't move, I can't afford to go anywhere. That brings the water bill. Water bill. All these fees are insane. I got it today, I'm like, there's no way.
Holly, you have to stick to the item.
Huh?
You have to stick to the item.
Well, I put down that I'm going to speak about both. I did put that down, that I'm going to put water bill also, but I think both of them are wrong, and I'm overcharged, and it's despicable. And I'll send you a copy of my bill. I'll show you, you know, how ridiculous it is for two people in a house. I feel like I'm paying for other people, and I shouldn't have to. You know, I could barely afford myself, and I just found out my hours are being cut at work today, so that's not helping. So I'm going to have to get another part-time job to afford to pay for the water bill and everything.
Okay.
So, but like, like I said, with the building, I don't think it's fair to kick these people out. It doesn't matter how much time, and I think it's wrong. You know, it's, you got to do what's right for the Virginia Beach citizens and for the businesses, not for yourselves, you know? You have to do what's right for us, for them, for the shops, for the restaurants. You got to do the right thing.
Okay, thank you for coming.
The next speaker is Natalie Ramos. And then Adam Appleton.
Good evening. Just for correction, for namesake, my name is Natalia Ramos. That's quite all right, no worries. I am an artist in the city of Virginia Beach, also a Recording Academy member and creative. I'd also like to let you know, I am the newly appointed general manager of Selden Market in downtown Norfolk. So my knowledge base is quite understanding of why there be a vote in favor of, you know, this new development, but my opposition comes with a story, if that's okay to be able to say. My time at Thank You for Listening, especially with the creative and music community, has been very important for me. On April 12th, 2025, I came in to search for records for my new album, and it just so happened to be National Record Day. I come across a record, and it just so happened to be a record for Commander Omar Torres Herrera. Pin that name for a little later. He was the Panamanian National Guard, and he signed a treaty with President Carter in September 7th, 1977. If you all are very aware of that date, that date is when they appointed two treaties, the neutrality treaty and the Panama Canal Treaty. It just so happens that he is the uncle of my uncle. And with Thank You for Listening, that place has been a home for me. It's helped me build my career. They have helped me in so many ways, also as Ace Gallery has been a home for me as well, not only to share my music, but my mind and my soul. That record is now going back to the Museum of Panama for preservation with my family. How that ties in for me as a creative and also a general manager for tenants who are building small businesses. As someone who is in support of community, I also want to be able to ensure that there is success. The city of Virginia Beach has always been successful in knowing that there is support in sports and also just with new development, but with the music community, it's been a little bit shaky. I will be honest to say I've had some hesitation, but I've also had a hope of light at the end of the tunnel. And I think, especially with that and knowing how these tenants preserve our culture, our history, and also innovation with technology and community development, I hope that you all have an understanding with knowing how that legacy lies, especially with preservation, because without that place, I can't even be able to preserve my own family history. So I thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thanks a bunch.
The next speaker is Adam Appleton. And then I'll recall Alan Hartcourt, just in case he came in.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. My name's Adam Appleton. I'm a third-generation oceanfront resident, and I'm here to speak in opposition of the proposed apartment development in the Laskin Road Gateway. And I want to argue that it does not fit the city's stated vision, it's poorly timed, and it will stifle local creativity and innovation, and it doesn't serve a vital community need. This project, 215 apartments, a parking deck, and 20,000 square feet of mixed-use space, may look like progress on paper, but in reality, it conflicts with the city's own long-term vision for the oceanfront resort area. The Resort Area Strategic Action Plan and Form-Based Code both describe Laskin Gateway as a, quote, "pedestrian-oriented mixed-use boulevard that serves as a distinct gateway into the resort area." The city envisioned this corridor as a welcoming arrival experience balancing retail, dining, and entertainment, not a wall of apartments. These documents even caution that, quote, "large-scale residential uses that disrupt the rhythm and scale of the resort streetscape are discouraged." That is exactly what this project does. In addition to going against the stated vision, the timing for this project doesn't align with the momentum we're seeing at the oceanfront. The Atlantic Park and Dome were just completed. The Laskin Road Widening Project finished this year. The Vibe just celebrated its 10-year anniversary. The oceanfront is thriving, and we are poised to see a significant increase in tourism. Having the second-most-important artery to the oceanfront mired in massive construction over the next five years will undercut the improvements we've just made and lessen the tourism experience, right as we are poised to see more first-time young visitors than any time in the last decade. Rushing this project risks undermining the very character the city is trying to build. Beyond timing, this proposal would stifle creativity and small-business growth, two of the city's top priorities in the RASAP. The plan calls for encouraging, quote, "unique locally-owned businesses and creative entrepreneurs that reinforce the resort's character and authenticity." Outside of the Vibe, this corridor has become an incubator for creatives and expresses the best of our city. We should be looking to recreate the success of the Vibe, not reduce it to a single neighborhood. An apartment complex with limited ground-floor space does the opposite. It reduces opportunity, limits diversity, and replaces potential storefront energy with architectural uniformity. As RASAP warns, quote, "overly uniform or monolithic projects can diminish the eclectic and creative energy that defines the resort area." We don't need another Buffalo Wild Wings. One of the key benefits touted by supporters of this proposal is housing. While I strongly agree that affordable housing should remain a priority...
Thank you very much. Really appreciate you coming.
What's that?
Appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you. No questions?
Any questions? No, thank you.
Okay. I had about 20 seconds left.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we saw the red light.
Alan Hartcourt. Mayor, that's all the speakers.
That's all the speakers, okay.
Does Mr. Beeman want to come forward? So I've got a question or two of the developer too, as well. Forward. So I want to thank all the speakers who spoke. So just a couple of questions as a landlord, because we heard some very good compelling stories from the tenants tonight, the creative tenants and art galleries. How much, can you describe in the ways that you have worked with the tenants in terms of lease terms or lease rates or improvements to help generate what is really is the coolest strip in the city? I can't agree more.
I appreciate the question very much. We feel like we've done a great job in finding the tenants. We feel like we've done a great job in finding the tenants that really fit the vibe of the space. As we said early on, we've owned the building for 60 years now. We have been in constant contact. I've been running it now for 12 years, my aunt before that and my grandfather before that. And I call the tenants regularly, whether it's prior to a storm, after a storm, always asking them how they're doing and discussing what we can do to continue to help them continue in the future. We have, excuse me, kept our rents extremely low for their benefit so that they continue to thrive, especially during COVID. We simply stopped collecting rent. And when our tenants have had difficulty, we have allowed them simply to postpone their rents until they could figure out how they can get back on their feet. We continue to see how we can work with our tenants to make sure that they will be okay during this transition period. And in fact, offering 30 months was really an opportunity for them to stay and be able to find a good space as opposed to continuing to go month-to-month. We have tenants that have to buy their supplies coming up for the following season. They needed to know if they have a month. We said, no, no, you have plenty of time. Please order your supplies that you need, whether Slim Cabana and so on. So I hope that that answers your question.
It does. And so you're in business to make a profit and also serve the community. Can you say why you're being so close to the tenants? I mean, they're on month-to-month, so you have lower rental rates and other terms that probably don't meet the market. Is there a reason why? And I think...
Well, we come from a family of retail. My grandfather started in retail. We also know that the building is in serious despair. I mean, it's extremely old. There is not a tenant we have that doesn't recognize constantly calling that things are leaking. We repair as best we can constantly. But at the same time, we also recognize that because we are telling them that it will be a short term until we know that the building will need to be taken down, that we then therefore make a trade and offer lower rent.
And just one more last question. So we talk about engaging the public. Can you maybe describe some more? Because that's, you know, if we move forward with this, this will be my request, that you meet with the public, meet with the city, planning department, and your tenants. You know, what are... What can you promise us, if you will, that you will do that?
Sure. We're happy to reach out, have community meetings, which we've done in other jobs that we've been... We've built in other communities where there's been concern from the local community. And obviously, we'll be working with the city to get their input. So it's important to us. I mean, we... It's important for any project to be successful. You have to have a buy-in from the community in the surrounding area. And it's really important that we have the right elements there to be successful in that. And that's important to us, and part of that has to do with the retail is a very big component of that, as well as the surrounding community. So we will certainly be more than happy to engage with those who would like to be engaged.
Thank you. Just one last question. It's been a rumor mill for years, and then that's my question. How many years have you all thought about redevelopment here with or without Papa John's? Again, it's been said, and I will say it in my statement later, you don't have to proceed with Papa John's, so it's been...
Right.
Two, three, four, five, six years?
Right. Well, we've actually... We've been engaged with the city in communication since 2020, when we started discussing the redevelopment.
Prior to the questions, how long have we been thinking about redeveloping our building?
Oh, for 15 years, probably. Again, we know this property has been at the end of its useful life and for quite some time. So we've had that 15, maybe more, maybe 17 years. We've been thinking about redeveloping it. And so we know that it's necessary, and again, there's just no more. The building's obsolete, so...
Okay, Stacy.
I have a couple of questions, if you will. Are any of the current tenants, that they sign, do you have a lease with any of those where they had the anticipation of staying there long-term?
At this point, there is no... There are no long-term leases on any of the property.
You did nothing to lead them to believe that they would be there long-term?
No, I communicate with great reg... Excuse me. I communicate with great regularity that the building is at its end of its useful life and that it will be redeveloped. We've been having this exact conversation for years.
So with or without the property that we're talking about, what are your intentions with the remainder of the property?
Again, as my cousin mentioned, the building is simply worn out. We anticipate that we will be redeveloping the property with or without the Papa John's site.
Anything? I'd just like to make note that, you know, I think that the Virginia Pilot does... Did a horrible injustice to this council and to your request here today by publishing on their front page of the paper today that council is gonna make a decision that's gonna impact the development, that's gonna impact the future of the tenants on this property, that by what we do here tonight is gonna influence your decision or give you a thumbs up or a thumbs down on the entire development. And I guess that's not the case. The property's going to be redeveloped. The tenants have had plenty of notice, and they're not going to be there long-term, regardless of what the vote is tonight.
That is correct. Due to the useful life of the building, it just can only remain for so long.
So and that entire area has been totally renovated or redone while you've been there holding on these years?
Yes.
So you're about the last block in the neighborhood?
I would say we are one of the last, yes. Not the very last.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Josh.
Thank you, Mayor. And councilmember, I actually read that same sentence and thought similarly. I think it actually said that this transaction would kick off redevelopment when we just heard that it was gonna be happening anyway. And I just, because there's a couple more steps left here, this is just, like you said, step one. And because you'll need to come back to the council and through the planning process on, you know, the various other steps going forward, I want to make sure, just with your help and maybe the city attorney's help, that I know the sequence and process going forward, because we're really... We're just talking about this corner piece right now. And that would require us, we would enter into a contract, and there would be a feasibility period, a due diligence period, however long that runs. You would make your financial and physical inspections of the property, decide whether or not it's feasible for you to proceed to close. You would need to go through site plan approval. You... I did see some very basic renderings that you had kind of floated through with the public. I think you've heard certainly from us and the public that it's an important gateway and corridor that we would like to see something a little more. But it wouldn't be typical necessarily of you to have shown that to us already, because you're so far... You haven't even gotten to the contract stage yet. So I guess what I'm trying to say and just confirm with you that we're all of the understanding that, you know, we don't know what this is gonna look like yet. We don't know if you're actually gonna close on the property if we enter into a contract. And then you've still got a street closure that I think needs to be worked out. So, sir, what I'm trying to say is there are reasons where you're gonna have to keep coming back to the council and the planning department so that we can make sure that we have something on that block that everybody feels good about. Is that safe to say?
It is very safe to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, at this point, work.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for approval of the application to move forward, and I have a statement after.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other comments? It worked?
So, thank you. So again, like I said earlier, I want to thank all the speakers tonight, all the folks that wrote us emails, heartfelt emails. I am a patron of a lot of the businesses on this street, on Alaskan Road and this building. And I understand exactly... I do sincerely, honestly, understand exactly what is being said and what is being felt. That being said, I do ask tonight for approval to move forward with the sales contract that is contingent upon the city approving a site plan, as just said, for a new mixed-use project and contingent upon the developer creating a plan that has both city and public input. There are a lot of moving parts. Again, there are a lot of moving parts. Design, public and city input, release of a public easement for the street in the rear of the building, working with current tenants and businesses, as we've talked about, establishing project and construction costs, huge hill to climb there. And finally, the ability of the owner to bring it all together, to make it happen. In other words, this is far from final, as you just said. And all the moving parts need to work together to make it all work. Again, that being said, I am aware that the owner developer will give to each business up to 30 months, and this could take longer, probably longer, but 30 months at this point to find a new location in which to relocate. That's two and a half years and probably from full contract execution, which could take another month, three months. So again, it could be longer than two and a half years. So as for the sale of this publicly-owned property, it was advertised for sale on the open market, and two bids came forward. This bid was better than the other bid in terms of price offered. The price offered does reflect, according to staff and in my opinion as well, the market value of the property. And the other bid wasn't as high and was also potentially improbable, although not for sure, because it would be an apartment building, a small apartment building. So now I want to make some comments about the potential mixed-use project. And this is important. Since March 2020, according to the Weldon Cooper Center at UVA, which studies and produces viable population studies and reports, the city of Virginia Beach has lost, repeat, lost, population, 5,500 in population since March of 2020, lost 5,500 in population in spite of what we all see as a lot of building, especially apartment buildings across the city. This is the state's largest city, and this is a trend going nationally. We've heard about this, but this is our city. So many might find that to be an odd statistic as we see these apartment buildings going up. And I'm not saying we should go back to the boom-go-go years before, but our comp plan, a comprehensive plan, housing strategies, resort area strategic action plan, all point to locating housing and density in the resort as a strategic growth area and especially Alaskan Road. This is the Alaskan Road gateway, as we've all been talking about tonight. This is why the city invested in Alaskan Road as a gateway to the resort, to Alaskan Road to the west and the north end to the north. If we want to take... If we want to attract young people and keep and retain our young people and have a desirable location for them to live and work, this would be an ideal location. My family and I love these businesses and patronize them often. The owner developer has done a fantastic job of assembling these businesses, and I understand why the public is in love with them and how cool it all is. But I do firmly believe that we, both the citizens and the city staff, can work with the developer to come up with a plan that best reflects our city, our values, and our desires. With two and a half to three years to finalize it, it'll be enough time for this to work itself out or not. So I ask for approval of the application with the stipulations contained in the ordinance. Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready for the vote? Let's vote.
Mayor Dyer, may I have your vote, please?
You got it.
And Councilmember Hemley, may I have your vote?
Yes. May I vote registered?
Can you hit the button? I'm sorry. It won't let me... It won't let us close it out unless you hit the button. Thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, you've approved the ordinance as amended. Sorry, I didn't see a no. I'm sorry. I apologize. By a vote of 10 to 1, you've approved the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, we'll move forward with planning item number five, ASC Real Estate LLC, Michael Sherrod. And the City of Virginia Beach Development Authority for Conditional Use Permit, Raib bulk storage at 2008 Huedon Way, District 2. Do we have any speakers?
We do. So I have two individuals registered as the applicant, Michael Ireland and Greg Schmidt, which... If you'll just state your name for the record, and you're representing the applicant?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yep. If you'll state your name, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Greg Schmidt with Kemley Horn, business address at 4525 Main Street in Virginia Beach. What we are here talking about today is a conditional use permit application for an outdoor storage yard for a project located within the Innovation Park off of Princess Anne Road. This conditional use permit comes by way of the underlying zoning for Innovation Park being light industrial I-1. The Innovation Park also has proffered design guidelines that talk to bulk storage being permitted within the Innovation Park. What we are storing in the bulk storage yard, just to be transparent, is items that are consistent with manufacturing of new acoustical generator enclosures. That's what Acoustical Sheet Metal makes. They ship these generators all throughout the country. This is not an industrial junkyard, like some of the lingo has been shared. This is an outdoor storage yard that is accessory to the manufacturing use that occurs with inside the structures. We have worked tirelessly with planning staff and trying to implement some of the feedback we had received following the planning commission hearing. We have worked to implement Commissioner Camp's request to have a shared use path that connects Princess Anne Road to Huedon Way through the Innovation Park and connects to a much larger trail network that economic development has invested in throughout the park that now connects to Tournament Drive and to parts of the Sportsplex. Beyond that, we have accommodated additional landscaping. I did a count earlier from our plan. We are adding 200 new trees to the proposed development and up to 800 shrubs. That's just the woody vegetation in addition to maintaining over six acres of green space in the 21-acre parcel. So understand, there's been a lot of questions about green space and the impact of the development. But with our plan and the commitment to screening of the structure of the use of the outdoor storage yard from public view, we have really packed in the landscaping in a way that will be successful for screening of that property in addition to specifically adding an eight-foot opaque privacy fence along the public view sheds to the outdoor storage yard. Acoustical Sheet Metal, and Michael will touch on this, but Acoustical Sheet Metal started in Virginia Beach, continues to invest in Virginia Beach and grow in Virginia Beach. We've also heard feedback about low-paying jobs and things of the sorts. Acoustical Sheet Metal has over a few hundred employees that work and live both in Virginia Beach. So their staff members have the opportunity to reside in the very city that they work in, which I think is special. And their story is that of grassroots effort in really establishing a powerful business in Virginia Beach that continues to invest in skilled labors all the way up to HR professionals, engineers, accountants, marketing professionals. So as this business continues to grow, the staff that they need to support the business diversifies, which I think is important for the opportunities that they present to the city and their residents. Those were kind of the big points I wanted to touch on. Some of the changes from planning commission, some of the implementation of the conditions that were requested to be added. The only other one I'll touch on is Commissioner Plumlee had requested that the outdoor storage yard be conditioned on construction of the actual structure. And the applicant is amenable to all the conditions as presented from the planning commission hearing.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is... Sorry. Michael Ireland.
Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, councilmen. My name's Michael Ireland. I'm the executive vice president of Acoustical Sheet Metal. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak in favor of this conditional use permit. Mr. Mayor, following your example with the recent ribbon-cutting ceremony we had with the governor... the governor, I'll try and refer to my notes and I'll speak from the heart, okay? I want to speak on three topics germane to this issue. One is our relationship with the city. The second is our people and our product. Acoustical Sheet Metal has been with the city for 25 years. We built five manufacturing plants during that time, and we have met the obligations which the Virginia Beach Department of Economic Development has put before us. Those obligations include employee count and payroll. In addition to those obligations with this facility, we intend to present a neat, organized, well-managed facility that has little impact to the city. And as our architect has said, that we have gone to a lot of trouble and a lot of expense to make this a facility that is not a heavy-use industrial factory kind of impact to the city. So we intend to meet that obligation. For our people, right now, our employee count is 700 people. This new facility will probably add another couple hundred people. Our aspirations are much higher than that. We have over 400, well over 400 Virginia Beach citizens in this facilities that we are operating. And while we love our industrial fabrication people, our welders and our electricians, to amplify what the gentleman just said, our Virginia Beach employees are controls engineers, electrical engineers, mechanical engineers, process engineers, project managers, quality control professionals, accounting professionals, HR professionals and visual development engineers, not to mention the supply chain people and the field service work and those kind of people. So we offer a great opportunity for growth. This facility will offer us a runway to the future to bring more people in. We bring people in, we train them, and we develop them, and we give them leadership positions. And this particular conditional use permit that we're asking for is for us to keep in tune with the just-in-time manufacturing process that we follow. We bring equipment in, we don't overstore, we don't, you know, unnecessarily burden the factory with storage material that we're not going to keep or we're not going to use. And we intend to, we need this material for a 24/7 operation, and the ability to bring that material in to stage equipment and to transport a Virginia Beach product across the country is vital to our success. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any questions? Okay.
The next speaker is Mike Wazloski. And then Bruce Biddle.
Good evening, sir, ladies and gentlemen. Look, I have no animosity towards the Acoustical Sheet Metal Company. However, as stewards of the city's land and wealth, I find that you are failing. You spent approximately $500,000 on the latest draft comprehensive master plan. The ink isn't even dry on it, and you're planning and gutting its soul, the green line contacts area. Representative Knight's proposed amendment to the city charter, an amendment that most of you agree with, would eliminate the area. When he talks supermajority, I don't know why he's even bothering. You proved that it's not necessary after the first silo vote. Four hours of citizen time, opposing the project, negative comments from independent organization, and you still voted to allow the project. What's our return on $500,000? All right, let's look at the bulk storage yard. In the new comprehensive plan, in the innovative park section, it states that this is where innovative technology businesses are. Really? You heard him tell you. Do custom enclosures to power generation equipment. Is that innovative? Is it even light industry as it is currently zoned? You need to make the development authority find appropriate businesses. If you don't, the green line contacts area will become just another industrial park in an area subject to flooding. The bottom line, the project belongs in one of the special economic development areas of the new comprehensive plan, areas that can accommodate future industrial and logistics In closing, you must know that your continued assault on the green line contacts area comes at a cost to your constituents. Construction on Hodam Road has already taken limited road funding from Centerville Road, District Seven, Pleasure House Road, District Nine, and Princess Anne Road Extension in District Two. And what about storm water management? Money that will now go to constant storm water mitigation in the green line contacts area will not be available in your districts. Any of your districts are safe from flooding? Yet you are willing to allow a project that will swallow scarce dollars when you can just follow the well-thought-out plan and better serve your districts. The comprehensive plan was, and it's written, for the whole city. Why not start using it to the advantage of the whole city? I do agree that growth is good and it's necessary, but bad unplanned growth is dangerous and more important, it's bad for your districts. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Bruce Biddle.
Hey, Mayor.
Good evening.
Counsel. Ted, I love the idea of the Acoustical Sheet Metal. I'm a Bruce Biddle. I live in West Neck. I own a satellite company, so I'm familiar with Acoustical Sheet Metal. You know, it's basically aluminum and steel, and they do quite a bit. And it's a, it's a great company. It's just in the wrong spot. It's right next to CHKD Building. Across the street is, I mean, you guys pass all the time, across the street is a neighborhood, the Innovation Park. Man, I just wish you guys had put it down damn neck where those Amazon buildings are. I mean, 700 jobs is 700 jobs. I mean, the guy back there made a tremendous presentation. Man, we need those type of jobs. Someone gave me some numbers that the average pay was $45,000, but, boy, just listen to that guy. It sounds like it's a lot more. I just think it's in the wrong place. They put a lot of money there. Another number I have here that the tax revenue is $250,000. City spent $25 million. You know, you can do the numbers on that. You know, it's 1%. It's just not a whole lot of revenue coming in. But my vote would be no to extend that out. Junkyard, I mean, they talk about putting generators there and whatnot, and generators just don't make a lot of noise. I just know from my business that when I've got a place where I put a lot of stuff, I go out there and I've got to move the sheet metal, I've got to move the metal, I've got to design stuff, and that's just what I do. With the neighborhoods, with CHKD and some of the others, it's problematic. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
Mr. Schmidt, would you like to come back up for rebuttal? Or Mr. Ireland? I'm not sure which.
I don't have much else to add unless there's any questions. I will make a statement as a civil engineer in the city of Virginia Beach that City of Virginia Beach's staff, both on Public Works and Development Services, does an outstanding job in evaluating the plans that we put in front of them. It's a brutal process that is very well thought through and very well considered for the quality of the plans that are coming out. And this has been come, Virginia Beach is known for one of the cities where the storm water is scrutinized the heaviest in the entire state, on the entire East Coast. So I do want to give staff credit where credit's due and the job that they do and working with us and reviewing the stuff that we put in front of them.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Henry.
I would like to preface my motion with a few comments. As I see the application, the major flaw is that this property has a very heavy use that is being categorized as light industrial. I'm learning that we don't have an ordinance clearly stating I-1, light industrial, and what is I-2, heavy industrial. We just seem to call everything light industrial. The applicant intends to use this site for the storage of the very large, heavy finished product, which are the generator enclosures that are fully assembled with generators on the interior of those enclosures produced from the first two phases of the company, which are awaiting pickup and delivery, and the materials stored rotationally as part of the manufacturing process. This bulk storage facility will allow the transport of these very heavy finished containers, which require oversized trucks with more than 10 axles and usually require an escort. To me, that would be classified as heavy industrial, which should be I-2. It does absolutely affect the neighborhood it is in, as well as the roadways it uses, in this case particularly Princess Anne Road, which is not intended to be a freight corridor, particularly with trucks of that size. Already, the traffic from Huedom to Princess Anne is causing serious issues. This property was rezoned from ag to I-1, light industrial, for what was to be a research park for biomedical institutions. It was to be constructed in a campus-style, low-density development, and the jobs it would provide were thought to be in the salary six-figure range. When that did not happen, the biomedical design guidelines were changed to include other technologies, still research, education and innovative, and so it became known as the Innovation Park. And of course, all of this is below the green line. For the neighbors who were very concerned about the change, commitments were made that the new guidelines would assure that there would be high-quality design, and it would include site elements that would contribute to the ultimate goal of creating a park-like setting suitable to their residential neighborhoods. In working with the neighborhoods, action was deferred twice, on April 4th, 2023, and then on June 10th, 2023, to make sure we got it right. Neighborhoods particularly mentioned in one agenda letter were Christopher Farms, Landstown Meadows and Princess Anne Meadows. On June 20th, 2023, the new Innovation Park guidelines were unanimously adopted by city council. I might add that eight current city council members were a part of that unanimous vote. Now, besides the guidelines not being met, there are many other concerns. Of this 21-acre site, the pre-development impervious surface is 4/10 of an acre. The developed impervious area will be almost 15 and a half acres. This is an area known to have poorly draining soils and a high water table. 60% of the site's storm water will be eligible for city storm water storage. The only site shown on this plan to accommodate the remaining 40% is only 0.29 or 29/100ths of an acre, less than 1/3 of an acre. I'm hearing much concern about the drainage issue. The water now drains through roadside ditches all of the way to reach the North Landing River. Will all of the city taxpayers be expected to pay their storm water fee forever for this maintenance? There is great concern that if we can't drain the golf course there, we won't be able to properly drain this large impervious area. Protecting the view shed along Princess Anne Road by requiring parcels with frontage on Princess Anne to install additional landscaping above... Pardon me. Above and beyond what is required in the city's landscaping guide is an important part of the Innovation Park guidelines. It has long been the city's goal to maintain Princess Anne Road's appearance as it leads to the municipal center. This proposed 250,000 square foot of buildings, three-story building with only a 30-foot setback just does not meet the standards of quality described in the guidelines, and the concerns go on. Acoustical Sheet Metal is a very fine company with good people as owners and good people as employees, and I'm very glad they're in Virginia Beach. Of course, this property is a part of that incentive package to assure that Acoustical Sheet Metal stays in Virginia Beach. I do believe that there is other property in another industrial park that will better serve this situation, but this property is just not suitable. We do have to be fair to all of our citizens. It is asking a lot to expect, to expect the good citizens who have written and spoken their concerns to have their property adversely impacted to satisfy this property. I do hope we can find a more agreeable solution, but I'm going to make a motion that this application for a bulk storage facility be denied.
Is there a second? Is there a second? There being no second, is there another motion?
I'd like to move for approval.
And I'll second.
All right, any comment? Let me just make, you know, a comment. You know, years ago, we had high hopes for biomedical going into that area. Unfortunately, the market did not agree with us, and so we had to do a pivot. And we value, we value our industrial base and the people that come here, whether it be steel, IMSA, or any group of people, Acoustical Sheet Metal, you know, because they bring value, they employ people and they become part of our community. And, you know, the fact is that this is not a startup. We already have, I believe, two facilities. They built the initial facility, recently put another one on their campus, and what they're asking for is an add-on. And, you know, we wish that economics and market trends didn't change, but once again, they do, and we are responsible to adapt to that. And when you talk about a company that has success of starting off with, what, eight people in 1974, and this will bring 850 jobs of well-paying jobs, and me being on the campus a number of times and see the happiness and the motivation of the people that work there that feel valued. And the other thing is too, they actually have a training program where they come in and train welders, give people a skill, people coming out of high school or maybe the people that were incarcerated, people that really need a good job. But once again, you know, we have so many, you know, once again, you know, we're a tourist base, we're a military base, but the other thing is there's a lot of really good, you know, manufacturing that goes on that, you know, really puts Virginia Beach on the map. So my thing is I'm really encouraged about this project and welcome that they're here and to help them succeed. That being said, let's open the vote.
The vote is open. By a vote of 10 to one, you've approved the application as amended.
Okay, thank you all. Okay, at this point, I think we're ready for appointments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Act of Transportation Committee to appoint Donald Crudup, the Agricultural Advisory Commission to reappoint John Cromwell and Jason Dolly, the Bayfront Advisory Commission to appoint Burl Saunders and reappoint Morgan Ayers, the Community Criminal Justice Board to appoint Judge Salvatore Iacquinto to represent the circuit court judge, Development Authority to appoint Michael Harris, the Planning Commission to appoint Nina Morjani to represent District 10, the Public Library Board to appoint a high school student member, Kai O'Neil, the TA-ITA Citizens Advisory Committee to appoint high school student members Kylie Smith and Kayden Ismail, and the Virginia Beach Cannabis Advisory Task Force to appoint Travis Chick, representing the citizen member. Move for approval.
Okay. Second, now, let's open the vote on that.
The vote is open. By a vote of 11 to zero, you have won those as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, thank you. Okay, folks, any unfinished business? Any new business? Thank you all. We are adjourned, and thank you all for coming.